Great.
Do a roll call with them?
Aldo Rovito.
Here.
Maria Surprise.
I'm here.
Chad Hawk.
Here.
Ashley Royal.
Here.
Pete Palace. Mark Francis.
Present.
Kate Day.
Because there's no public comments on the agenda items.
We hear voices.
You see dead people. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, February twenty five, twenty twenty five.
So good.
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's a unanimous way of approved. And we go on to number five, a discussion and action of forming a subcommittee regarding the gravel and pedestrian pathways. So that also includes the bike lanes, I'm assuming, right? Being that it just says pedestrian or?
Well, I think it says pedestrian pathways. I think it's because there was some communication about bike lanes and the sidewalk.
Okay.
Point of clarification, though, bike lanes are not pedestrian pathways, right? Because they're just bike lanes.
But it's, it's, I think the intent is for the road and sidewalk.
Should we just clarify it?
But again, you can, the committee can have any name or sort of give, you know, they, and we can, they understand it's to keep the rocks out of the bike lane, off the road, and out of the sidewalk.
I listened to the, uh, the, the recording of the last commissioners meeting, and it sounded like there was some confusion as to what we were recommending.
But see, typically, the way it works is the other way around. Y'all will recommend, and I really, I thought I presented pretty good. Y'all were asking to form a committee.
Yep, you're right.
They seem to be, and rightly so, usually the way it works is it comes from the top down. They send it to the planning board, y'all are sending it back.
I see.
But I think it's clarified. I mean, they gave you the ability to form a committee under the ordinance, so that's where you're at.
So, but just because we have the ability to form a committee doesn't mean we have to do it. There was, you know, and at this point, just my personal opinion, I think we might be a little bit premature on forming a committee, especially given the ordinance on community advisory committees. Because once we start it, we've only got three months.
You've got ninety days, gotta go back and ask them.
Yeah, there were times.
And, yeah.
The other thing is, is that I think you give, you, you, I think you give, uh, you're still going, they still have to report to y'all. You still gotta have two members sitting there.
Right.
Do you, then you still have the chairman, the chairman of that board has to report to this board, and then this board has to report to, we can do it, so.
The other board.
Right.
If you do it, then I'll be reporting to the board whatever happens, sort of happens.
Is there a stormwater committee? Because that was our original discussion, trying to work with the stormwater committee.
Because we have a stormwater, we actually have several things going on with stormwater.
Right.
And then I'm in, we're in the middle right now, I believe, the stormwater grant. So we have a stormwater plan, we have a, there was a, I don't think there ever was a stormwater committee, there was a stormwater, some people meeting about stormwater. That included the engineer, uh, several engineers and several staff. And the, the new grant is for resiliency and that kind of stuff, it's focused a little bit on stormwater.
So even if we want that subcommittee?
I'm the principal on that. We've got a lot of stormwater stuff going on, so we've got a lot of stormwater stuff going on.
Yeah.
But it, and it's all designed, engineered, their long-term plans, they're all, yeah, we're, we're past the committee part of it.
Well, that, and that's why I was trying to say, we, in our, I went back to listen to the minutes, we talked about meeting with stormwater committee people, and we don't have a stormwater committee to meet with, so even then, we created a committee, it's kind of known.
We have, we have stormwater rules, stormwater ordinances that are in place that's going to, that, they will be the only ones that's going to apply to anything that the planning board would decide to do on those individual lots. That you won't be able to have much say-so over that stormwater plan and that kind of stuff, because what I'm saying is, it's past this point, where we're in the stages of construction and money, money, so.
So does it make sense to go forward with that before the stormwater?
I think it goes, I think it goes, it makes some sense to go forward with some kind of an idea, or to even start just bouncing it around and just thinking about what we can do to keep those rocks out of the road and off the sidewalk. And we can do that, the whole idea of the principle of, of sending it to y'all was because the premise was on the individual lots, and individuals having to, you know, assisting the town about what they may be allowed and not be allowed to do, and whether we could come up with a rule. And that's, I think that's where we're at.
I think at the last meeting too, it was mentioned that, um, that y'all could bring back some pictures and possible recommendations to us?
When you went to the committee saying, we, we didn't follow through on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we can. If that's what y'all want, we'll get you pictures, and we can come up with some recommendations. And the pictures and recommendations will be probably based off of what I brought up at the commissioners meeting that y'all was discussing. Not only the, the, the rocks and the stuff. And of course, you know, the DOT is doing the sweep, and we're paying the DOT, or the contract with the plant, so, uh, to do that sweep. So it's, that's already set and done.
Right. Oh, so DOT is doing the sweep?
Yeah, I think, well, we do the sweep, and then they reimburse us.
It's twice a year.
It's thirty-eight, it's thirty-eight thousand and under some dollars, twice a year.
Thank you for bringing up the cost. That was gonna be my question, was trying to understand, because as we talked about it, we should understand the ramifications of costs.
So that's, that, so that it's being done, the problem is, is that you understand that's not a constant, fix.
Right, that's just a mandate.
That's us going out there after the rocks is out there and moving them. But I, I, if you went back and listened to board meetings, you'll see on numerous occasions, or maybe even some planning board meetings, if the minutes were kept, that I brought up the fact that those rocks were in the road before we had other things. And I actually saw a kid faceplant out here, it, it went long after I came to work here, and I brought it up all the time. I don't know how that kid didn't get hurt worse. He's on a bicycle, he's getting rocks. They don't roll too good in me, it'll get right. Sands, rocks. And, and we actually, that actually happened in yacht watch, and we, we actually allowed them to do some stuff because they have, uh, they have enough room that we, with their forty percent. Whereas over here, we have that ordinance that says it's all about the rock in the first, in the segments.
So before we go talking more about this subcommittee, if we, can we discuss the topic itself? I'm asking from a point of order. And get into details, because we really didn't even have more conversations, because we, you know, Tim suggested go to a committee, last time we all sat up against each other. Can we have, from a parliamentary point of view, can we actually have an open discussion? Do we have to close this to go to comments?
You can, you can, if you're not going to form the committee, how would you, how would you say, if you want to wait to see if you want to form the committee, you know, I would just make a motion to, to postpone forming the committee until you have further information.
I understand that.
Because they're still under the impression y'all could do it without a committee.
I understand that. My question is, is can we, in the comments section, go ahead and have an open discussion about it, or do we, if we close it out, are we closing out any further discussion today on this, as a group?
You know, I would think, I mean, the agenda item is discussion and action.
Yeah.
The subcommittee, though.
Yeah, but I, I, I think the, well, in my view, we're talking about the issue of gravel and pathways, the pedestrian, I think we've already discussed, it's really the bikeways, because that, the bikeways are the adjacent.
But I think you can ask.
Property to the driveways now.
I think that you can, I think you can make any discussion that you want that has to do with what would have been discussed for a committee. You can have any discussion you want about gravel, about driveways, about parking, because you're trying to come to an conclusion of whether or not you need the committee. And you can get pretty deep into anything you want to talk about when it comes to that subject. So, because if that's where you're headed, to do it or not do it, if you want to talk about it.
Yeah, if, if we look at our previous minutes that we just approved, you know, it says, Director Evans explained there's been an ongoing issue of gravel falling into the bike lane and sidewalk, it's been a public safety issue. So, well, at least in my opinion, certainly we can discuss how we want to proceed with.
I don't see a problem with it. I don't think you're in violation of any of the rules.
Great.
Because it's not on the agenda because of the discussion about it, the committee is actually on it.
Does the town itself have any recommendations? Do they see any solutions?
I have, I, the, the, the solution that I have thought about all these years is what I brought up to the board that night, which they did send it to y'all because it's going to require ordinance. And we had some discussion about it last night. Is that we could allow pervious concrete in sections, you know, they, if people, and I think people would want.
You think people are actually gonna do it, take the expense?
Yeah, because I think if you had, yeah, I think, well, you could write a rule or something, but you, you wouldn't want to do that. But you could write a rule saying that you could and ask people, you know, you know, if they could possibly do that. A lot of people, we have to stop them and put concrete in the driveways every day. Every day we have to. We go out there, they're already pulling up the rocks, you put them down with stuff, they're forming up boards, and we have to stop and go, you know you can't use concrete, then I get to lunch, like, well, maybe you won't be here next week. I can get you tires and won't be here, I'll put concrete. Like it's gonna change, we not gonna be, oh, y'all get, don't believe me, I get it. So they, they, the truth is, we stop them all the time. We ride down the road, we see them, and I look at Janice, and Janice, what do you do? Make sure they don't put concrete there, because that's what they're trying to do.
Inspector Janet.
I, I think people would do it.
But we're looking for a solution, right?
I think people will do it because it'll create a smooth transition for the bike lanes now over all those lumps, the lumps that were created.
But we're gonna go back into our same problem that we talked about before, there's all these stormwater plans, and we are adding to the stormwater.
Pervious concrete's not, should not add to the stormwater issue anymore than gravel.
Bike lanes did. Why would the?
Bike lanes are, are impervious.
But they added to the stormwater problem, is my point. Because we added, we added more impervious.
I would, I would say, I would say this, that we can monitor or manage what the DOT does.
Well, but that's.
We can manage what we do. And I don't think, while the bike lanes are not, we're discussing, we're discussing the rocks that are in the bike lanes that are coming out of all the individual problems, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get the DOT to be able to.
Yeah, but the more that we add more concrete, pervious or impervious, we are taking away from how stormwater is going to be affected on the sidewalk.
Well, pervious.
Pervious is not fully pervious, though.
Right.
It's only a perfect percentage. Impervious concrete, as you said last meeting, you have to keep it, keep it clean.
We have to maintain it, yeah.
Well, here, but here's the thing, you got to remember that I wouldn't recommend we allow anybody who, who's already at or exceeds our forty percent. What's happening is, what I think I can't make clear enough is, is that we don't allow concrete in the setbacks. That means the first twenty-five feet from the road to your house can't have concrete, but you can have concrete from there back. So if you're only at twelve percent, you know what I mean, then you're not adding any more by putting pervious concrete there when you're allowing, well, when you're allowing forty percent on a, on a lot that's a third of that size on a canal or on the second road. So it's not like you're overwhelming the system, you know what I mean, on those individual lots. I think that, that's to be considered, but you would not allow anybody, we don't allow anybody to put pervious or pervious concrete or anything else other than something that's considered pervious on the ground without a stormwater plan in mind. So you have to have a stormwater. So the idea is, is that when people build new homes, we make sure that the water don't go in the street, we make them comply with the stormwater ordinance, our phase two stormwater ordinance, and any water that they do have on site has to be retained on site, every permit. She goes, she reviews it, she reviews it, sometimes I review it, to make sure that that's what's happening. But that wouldn't change, would a ordinance change with pervious concrete next to the river?
Well, help me, help me through that, because one of the biggest issues are where they have a higher elevation, where it's, to get into the driveways like that, if you're putting pervious concrete now, the water's still going downhill. So it's gonna get in the road. So it means it's still a stormwater problem, because it doesn't, the pervious concrete doesn't catch all of it, it's still going out.
Well, it, it all depends on what the pervious concrete calculations are and, and what you do with it. I'm not saying it's a fix, I'm just saying if you're gonna, if, if, if that's the case, you know what I mean, then there's a lot of people out there who argue with you that pervious concrete ain't doing that. I'm just telling. And I tell you one, the people that we'll argue that with is the engineers that are designing it. They will argue that it's not doing that.
What's the, like?
I would, I would argue you're right, but I will argue that it's not.
Well, I have one question on pervious, because we have it. You highlighted the success down here. We have to maintain it.
Yep.
Do we know what that's gonna cost to maintain? Because it's my understanding for pervious, and please correct me, is you have to maintain it or it will get clogged.
Well, yeah.
And so what, what are we doing?
We're blowing it off, we're blowing it off down there every day. It gets blowed off every day.
So we have to blow, so a homeowner might have to blow theirs off as often?
Well, I mean, it's possible if that's what the maintenance is, but sometimes, some areas, like when I was in Leland and Calabas, they would allow pervious concrete, but you had to record the maintenance program with it as a count. In order to get it approved on the face, too. That's anything under acre, anything over acre, you gotta have a stormwater plan.
Am I right, though, of pervious concrete, if they're not act, if the voluntary homeowner puts it in, and they don't maintain it, it will clog, and then it becomes pervious?
Impervious.
If not maintained.
It's gonna become.
More impervious.
Impervious.
Sorry about my words, thank you for clarifying, but is that not true?
I don't, I don't know if it's true, but if, if you're asking, if I take it true, yes.
I appreciate it.
And then where's that homeowner gonna blow all that stuff? Are they gonna blow it back onto their property?
I'm trying to figure this.
Well, we'll chat.
It's like, I keep hearing this, I keep thinking, I understand that.
Well, that, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm throwing it out there, so I'm, I'm saying that.
Well, I'll throw out my idea, which I, which is a half, whatever you want to call it, idea, but it was when I was driving, I know it sounds stupid, but I said it last meeting, I may, you may disagree with me, but the town did want these bike lanes, we did vote on it, we own the problem that's been created. There's this hap, thing that happens every Tuesday to Saturday, we have our trash, it's rolled up by somebody. Why can't we look at it, when they're rolling it up, or have that same group come back and brush it up, brush the rocks up? I, I mean, it's a cost item, but the town did create a lot of this problem.
I'm not sure the guys that roll the trash can and the guys.
I'm not saying it's them, I'm just saying as a solution, you could, we're paying for that now as a town, right? That's, why couldn't we look at that as a solution?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna say that I think that trash cans rolled out and rolled back are pretty much a dependent, and they come out, they come out, when you go back, they go back. Rocks being brought into the road by cars, or being kicked or whatever, is not dependent, and it's happening, you know, through behavior.
What happens in.
So I don't know how you're gonna sweep it in one day, it's gonna change to the next day. It's not like you take the trash out, then you take the trash in, kind of thing, where you pull the trash can back, it's not going back until a certain time. Those rocks are going out there all the time.
So you're telling me that we're actually looking for a solution to prevent any gravel at all getting into the rest? Okay, because I, because I don't know that you'll ever get to a hundred percent.
But, but, but how do you reduce it, I guess, is, and what can we come up with?
And are we talking all of the island and all the roads on the island, or just Ocean Boulevard?
You could, you know, we're talking pervious and impervious, why, why can't we say you can't have rocks within the first ten feet, let them?
I was just gonna say, uh, that's a sticky wicket, as somebody used to say.
Right.
Because the issue is along the bike, adjacent to the bike lanes.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see how we could mandate you can't have rocks, because it would have to apply to every property owner. And I've got rocks going right to the street, and I sweep them off the street frequently, but.
But you do realize that we may not have, be able to solve that.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't really think it has a solution.
And you got roads that are dirt, that, that, I mean, look at Deal, I'll use that as an example.
We may, the, the, the plan may be to let the town go forward with the maintenance program they got, see how it plays out. It could be your best course, but it's just something different. You're gonna have a whole lot of other, other stuff that come in your way here for.
And the maintenance is already in place, right? How, I don't even know how often they're gonna be sweeping them.
Once, twice?
Yeah, we, they, they're billing us twice, so I don't know how many times they're billing it, but I bet we've had loss of, that's that number, yeah. But find that out.
Yeah, but the DOT decided they'd only do two. We asked for four, and they only approved two, what they paid for.
Two per year.
Year. Year. And I think we have to apply for it. I should have asked this question earlier, but I mean, I think we have to apply to get that money, it's not permanent, we have to get it.
We have to re.
We have to resubmit for it, so it could go away in future years from the DOT, so, but I, I don't recall the back.
Well, I think we were, it was a pro for us to identify this as a safety issue, because I've experienced it personally, but I ride the bike. So unfortunately, because we've identified it, and we've documented that it's a safety issue, uh, maybe that's just something the board should be advised of, is that.
And the idea may be that we can do it somehow with more.
More frequent maintenance.
More frequent maintenance.
Yeah, and I don't know what, so, so DOT is paying for it, but they're only budgeted for twice a year? Yeah.
It's thirty-eight thousand dollars for twice a year we get?
We pay thirty-eight thousand dollars, one, thirty-eight, eight.
And of course, forty thousand.
They're doing, but it must be pretty.
Damn, yeah.
That's a lot of money to sweep the road once, up and down, I think.
I could go to the streets.
I'll try to find out, I'll, I'll do it.
Tractor and do that at four a.m. and be done.
Yeah.
Easy nineteen thousand.
Give me just a second, we can keep talking, I'll try to find out.
But is there, is there a position that, that, you know, that we have taken this up to the DOT that's partly their responsibility, is there a position that we put some of the ownership back on the state? Other than the DOT claiming, because when we put the bike lanes in, which we did pay for, right, but that was approved by the DOT, don't there be some responsibilities if it's a public hazard? Or if that backfired on the road? I don't know. I hate when you go to the state, I worry it seems to backfire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta be careful. I'm sure that maintenance is being done out of your way. You gotta be sure. I said something about the runoff at their moment, and they didn't do anything there for five years. Well, they'll do it, maybe. I'll tell you how often it is, for sure. I probably would have done now, I would have paid more attention.
It is a touchy issue, because I'm sure, I don't know if the town officially requested DOT to install bike lanes.
It's four times, y'all.
Four.
I thought it was four times.
We get four times.
Okay.
It's most quarterly.
Yeah, once a quarter.
Yeah. Do you know, did the town officially request the bike lanes? I don't, I don't remember that being in action, but.
I want to say that, uh, I, I'm not sure, I'm actually, on for me, but I was only an alternate, but I guess I'm on that now, so thank you. But I think that came out of GSAT, I think that came out of the Grand Strand Area Transportation thing. There was a money allocated for, for that kind of thing, and then each partner, you know, had the opportunity to look for a project, and they were looking for somewhere to spend the money for the project, and it, it kind of came up. I don't know if it was, if it was we asked for it, or if it was available, and we didn't, kind of thing. And I think that's what it was, if I remember correctly. And it came along with all the work that they're gonna be doing, all the way down one-thirty across the bridge, it came along with it, there's gonna be some other, maybe where you done, some other paving on the bridge, and some other stuff along with this.
We did pay, like, one point seven for the bike lanes, one point seven nine, right, one point seven eight, so we had to put money into it.
Yeah, it was a, it was a money available and we were going on there. Originally, they were gonna be putting in sidewalks and stuff like that, but I was trying to get from them, or the magic park was all the way around, keep going. Part of them went outside the driveway, you could.
So we're pretty much dead set against the forming a subcommittee for the, uh?
Yeah, seems unnecessary.
I'm almost, but is the question necessary?
It is also not the DOT, it's a private venue.
What's that?
It's a private venue, it's not the DOT.
All right, we pay.
But the DOT is contracted with them, and then.
Yeah, that's right.
So we pay for it, and they, and DOT reimburses town.
So is there a schedule that they come? Do we know a date?
It looks like it's quarterly, it's going down to you.
But how do we keep track of that? Do, are we, do we know, like, is there like a specific date that we know they're coming throughout the year, or, or they just show up?
They, they give us a schedule, I don't know, we can find that out.
I mean, I guess you could reduce the hazards during rental season and ask, ask to move the schedule out of the four, the green in the summer, you know, it sounds crazy, but that's part of the solution.
Yeah, you're gonna have more, more in the road during the season, of course, activity in and out of the driveway.
Yeah, but I would say if that's the case, then definitely have one in like May, and then another one in August, where you have, you know, most of the traffic here, this way, at least it's, it's being done prime time. Whereas you're not doing it in, you know, April, then in June, and then now, now you're waiting till September, and the season's over.
Yeah.
You know?
You know, it's better to do it once and wear it.
Yeah, you don't need it that much.
I'm not real sure.
I don't know if we have a solution.
Yeah, I don't either.
To bring back to the board, other than.
This is my opinion, we didn't have enough crockery to fit in the bike. We work all day long, we're not really sure we're getting anywhere.
Yeah, the only solution I see is just that the DOT is gonna do it, then do it during those prime times at least, you know?
Look at loading the schedule, consistent with the activity.
It's a suggestion for the board, though, that from us, a suggestion could be, you know, pay more out-of-pocket budget, to do it more often, if this doesn't work. I like Tim's idea, saying, see how it works.
Right.
If it doesn't work, and we have to do it, then, I know budget season, they'll miss it, but let's see how it works, and if it doesn't work, ask for more of it.
Right.
Definitely not anything that touches you this time of the year. Seems to be the last of a big problem, it's probably getting replacements out of there.
Right.
That's.
Stormwater seems to be the last of a big problem, so the next big problem, too.
Is there any ongoing activity regarding stormwater management?
It's moving its way through the system.
Yeah.
It's, you should look at it, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, we have, we, there's several models out there that are gonna be followed, and I'm gonna try to get up on the field. Because like I said, this new grant that we're applying for now, the, the way things are being done now, I'm the primary on some of this stuff, so I have more information, especially on stormwater.
But is there gonna be like a reconstruction of Ocean Boulevard itself? Is that gonna be now ripped apart to, no, it's not gonna be touched?
There'll be some work done, but it won't be, there, there should be some identified discharge areas, remain, we try to get some easements from private folks, get some water out of there. Our ordinance even encourages that, I don't wanna pay attention to it, but our ordinance encourages private easements for the range. Sometime in the past, somebody recognized the best way to get that done. But right now, we're dealing them and identifying where those areas are, and they're working on some of the worst areas by getting the water out of there, like at the East End. Those areas that are locked up in the middle are part of the ones that were in, that have been expanded and put into that stormwater, we expanded it, catch the three hundred block. Mr. Powers has to call it like old.
Like old.
He sure does.
It becomes one, right?
Yeah, he just, I took a drone picture, I took like, probably a thirty-minute drone picture, David used it to help get, he took it with him to help get us funds.
Right.
I called the cars, and like things later are still there.
It's still there.
So what we have to do is we have to get permits, we have to. We gotta get a plan in place and get permits and get approvals to get that water out there for public safety reasons. That's what it's aiming.
Right. Well, as far as our job here, as far as this, uh, committee, we, I think we've decided that it'll be ineffective and we're not gonna do that. Is that correct, you and everybody?
Yeah, it's kinda how I feel about it.
Maybe if we can, try to get the DOT to clean up, do their cleanup where it's prime time for us, like maybe on a schedule of May and August.
Or May and July.
What?
Or even May and July, if it's like depending on.
Well, they do it every three months, so if we do May, June, July, that would be August first, like-
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
And August first, so at least you're right in the middle of the season.
Yeah.
Clean during those times. I mean, I don't know if that can be done.
Sorry, I think what you're saying is, as a group, we're saying, we don't need a committee, a subcommittee. But we are recommending that we see how the DOT does.
Does.
But ask for a change in schedule if it's not covering the high lines.
Right.
And see how it does and based on the results over the summer.
And go from there.
Then come back and revisit the question.
I think that's feasible. What, what do you all think?
Maybe we asking to monitor that, that's the, that would be the next question. See the DOT doing it.
No, oh, no, it would have to be us, the town at some point, right? What do you?
Another solution.
Well, I think if y'all send, when y'all send your recommendation up there and they tell Christie what to do, Christie will figure out who's supposed to be monitored.
Right.
I think that's, I think that's where it works.
That's why we're gonna have to do it, I believe.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen most, off the hour.
Right.
You know, saying our public works folks, they're, they're on the roads all the time, but I, I like your point. Christie, so maybe we could recommend to the, what's her current title?
Interim Town Manager.
Well, maybe we should just recommend to the board that, uh, we have sufficient monitoring of the bike lanes to ensure that it's maintained safely.
And then try to get on that schedule where it's beneficial to us, where they come at off prime time, where maybe they come that first week of May and that first week of August.
So, or maybe we just, maybe we just recommend, uh, that the board establish some way of monitoring the bike lanes, and so that they can provide that feedback back to the board for their action as they see necessary.
So, what you're, I think what I'm hearing you say is, is that your recommendation is that the board have some sort, or, or have some policy in place, generally have some policy in place that monitors the, the, you know, the sidewalks to determine the effectiveness, you know, like for the duration of the year and the times that it's being utilized.
Right.
And consider increasing the frequency if it is.
Yep, exactly. So, I think you can just come to a consensus of that. We can pull it off of the, get that language off of the recording.
Okay.
Or we can take that back. So, you can just do it by consensus.
Cause I, cause I do think that, that would address the potential liability issue.
About the ticket, something like that.
You know, we can't, we can't ignore the fact that it, because I remember, I think part of the reason the town elected to pursue the bike lanes was we, we had some significant injuries. And granted, the town's not responsible, but I think the bike lanes were considered to be a, a remedy for, people gonna be biking, must give them, you know, at least-
It was the traffic issue too.
Mm-hmm.
Which knows one other issue.
What's that?
I keep seeing, not every day, but it's, what I'm observing is, you know, the white line that denotes the bike lane is actually, it, it, it indicates that vehicles are not supposed to go beyond that white line.
Right.
Right.
You know, it, it, it designates what, what is the, the lane of traffic. But what I observe all, very frequently is people say, oh, we got a wider lane now. So, they're riding, and, and I don't wanna impose another task for our understaffed police department.
Exactly.
But, you know, it, it's, uh, maybe it's an, an education thing that, you know, hey, that white line there, you aren't, you aren't supposed to be going beyond it. In fact, my daughter got pulled one time because they thought she was under the influence and she's never drunk, bitten or even one drop in life. But, you know, she was just weaving and, and, uh...
It was like ball light?
But anyway, that, that's a separate issue.
Can I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, other than the language we just talked about, but also, I think it might be important based on what I listened to from the last meeting, I could not be at, but someone presents, why are we taking this position for the board? Why we're saying, well, one, we don't need a subcommittee. Two, this is our, our position, one.
We don't need a subcommittee, just not at this time.
I understand, but at least present it back to the board. Have us, have you part of that conversation to help with, help with clarity? Cause they came back to us and said, I mean, I know, Tim, you're, it was your idea of saying, hey, let's put some pavement down. And you're like, oh crap, you said it, right, out loud. And then here we are, and I think it would be good they could hear from us, cause I know it was a lot for you to cover last, the last week as well. And usually, isn't that, is, aren't determinants up when we come back with a decision? Isn't that part of the process that that can happen?
Well, I think it's-
Usually I carry the stuff with the plan, we're back to the board for mention.
Okay.
Um, and if you don't think I'm doing it well enough, we have to do it.
No, it's more of a healthy conversation, cause like, I mean, don't take this wrong, you said, you said I don't know.
I think the confusion came, I think the confusion came at the last meeting was when they asked me to describe why y'all wanted to do that. You know, I mean, that's not my, my place to bring your recommendation back. They're asking me to clarify on what I have, why you wanted to committee, you know what I mean? And that's not, there's no answer for that. They, they can either say yes or no. I, I explained to them that the issues were more complicated and that's what we decided. But beyond that, I can't be trying to delve into your mind. You know what I mean? I think that what, what was happening there was, was that, uh, you know, it's like it was lost on me. A lot of people don't think that subcommittee is one.
Right.
And the person that voted no was on the salary. But I'm not sure that the ones that she was on, mostly what they ended up being was exactly what it or had already been described, or, you know what I mean? Or, I'll be honest with you, the only subcommittee that I know that ever I felt like made a difference is the one that we used, that was not a subcommittee, but it was, there were two of them. One was when we dealt with the height issue, we had to break the height. And we put together a team, came back to the ordinance. And the other one was the lift station. And those items were identified by the town staff and we got a group of people in the room and then we presented that to the board committee. And I can name about four or five that mostly what they ended up being was lifted. And they, we, a lot of them, nothing, nothing happened and then, then the board would take up the same issue two years later and actually would happen. So, I think that that's, we have someone to recognize that, you know, the effectiveness of them, while they can be doing this on some.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the consensus right now with the board is not to go forward with the subcommittee. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's one, one thing that's down. And I think, um, a further consensus is to try, uh, to wait and see whether the cleanup, the four times a year quarterly cleanup is effective and works. Maybe if we could change or get a, a firm date where it's, you know, within our busy season, where it works in that respect too, where it's getting, being cleaned up during that time. Is that, is that agreeable to everybody?
I think it's our role of language.
I mean, well, I don't know how else to put it, we're not taking a vote on it, it's basically a consensus of the board right now, correct? There's no motion.
I think we can do it by consensus, not go forward committee.
Yeah.
And now you just wanna send something back, but I don't think you need to make a motion.
Right.
Thinking just by consensus and we'll carry it back.
Right.
Yeah.
And just make that, the monitoring piece, right? Make sure that somebody is actually monitoring the effectiveness of the maintenance.
Yeah.
Because if, if, if they're doing the maintenance and it's not effective, then we have, then we have a whole nother problem.
Right. And that would have to be determined by, I think Christie would have to determine who could do, or who that would be to monitor.
But I, I think we still have to have some language in there that says, we don't see an effective way of preventing the growl at this time.
Yep.
Sure, that could be part of the language.
Yeah, that could be part of the language.
I think we had you been clear about that, cause that's what they were asking us for.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think he's right about that.
Yeah, I do, I do too.
John, are you capturing all this?
I'll play it back.
Oh, it's recorded. We're making a lot of circles here.
That's why I said we'll, we'll listen to, because, um, again, the language, like, uh, if y'all say it, you think that's what you want, we'll get the language right from the town.
Okay.
We'll, we'll literally write it out.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
I should notice, when's the next board meeting?
Uh, May?
The third Tuesday.
Tuesday of May?
I will let you know.
Was it third?
May twentieth.
May twentieth?
May twentieth.
Twentieth?
Mm-hmm. And that will be, and also they approved at the commissioners meeting on Tuesday. That will be the public hearing for all of our ordinance changes that we passed. That will be at five o'clock on May twentieth. Will be the public hearing for those ordinance.
And then the following week is another planning and zoning board meeting after that?
Yes.
Fourth Tuesday of every month.
Yep.
Is there anything anticipated that's gonna be required? Is that the only meeting?
For our meeting?
For our meeting.
Only if the board ties us.
Only if something at the board meeting that comes up so far, but nothing anticipated.
You would have to live in my world, but how?
I refuse to live in your world.
You'd have to live in my world. Cause it, I may come up with something. Sometimes I, we, we come up like, like, I think at least one, two, maybe all of them. We, we actually came across, so all of them left a hundred foot, I think we recognized needed to be changed. And we're doing that every day. There was a lot of stuff in that, so I, I can't imagine very few meetings going by. We had about, when Cody went through, and then we had the folks that owned the board before this folks. They were, the, the way they were doing stuff, we, we weren't engaged that much. We did a whole lot of stuff that they were making. They weren't engaged in the planning or, not like, I think this one was. We are, we are finding stuff and seeing stuff in their face. I could be bringing something. But right now, I don't think the board, that I'm aware of, has tasked us with anything at this time. But we could bring something, but if it's, if it's a meeting that, you know, can't make or you don't think it's gonna be on the table, but planning board stuff usually is not on the emergency level, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
A lot of it can be looked at more than it should be is, what we get.
Lynn, that vein, is anything that y'all see out there that we should be considering?
Been here, been here a while now. If anything I've seen, we consider. Um, I mean, they may be seeing stuff now that I didn't pay attention to before, but I, I, I don't know what it could be. There are some projects that need to take place and everything stuff like that. But, you know, a lot of times, the planning board, I guess, is the gate to the development and the land use issues.
Right.
So, you're stuck in that one fifty-seven, uh, little bit, um...
Carrie, is there anything you see out there that's?
No, not at the moment.
Cause I can imagine, I mean, y'all are looking for stuff in accordance with existing ordinances, but if there are things that should be adjusted.
If there is something that needs to happen here, but I've been reluctant to bring it, and we could look at that if that's something we wanna do in the future, if I have to get it all together. But we have a, we, we, our ordinance is geared towards low lots, low lots and not high lots. Why, it makes an exception. The exception leaves out certain criteria that we have to require. We end up requiring it, but we don't have much teeth in. We do it by basically denying their stormwater permits unless they give us what we want.
Yeah.
But the, because it's in the very good, it has to do with stormwater. And it has to do with just a lot. So, basically what it has to do is, is that if a lot, if the two lots on both sides are high and you're in a low lot, and they're higher than one foot in the road, we have to use an exception to let them build that up. Well, what that causes is a, what used to be the stormwater retention area for the neighborhood, it now causes the neighboring properties to have to retain their own water where they've been dumped in, in the low spot. And so, uh, or it's been moved over. So, they end up having to keep what used to, what's been sheet flowing over. It happens a lot, more so than you can imagine. And it usually shows up either dirt construction or it shows up when we see it on the toilet. And what we have to make them do is, is that a lot of times, depending on how the lot is, we can't allow them to build more than a foot above the road unless we use the exception. And then when we use the exception, a lot of times it creates that situation. The fix is we make them put in retaining walls. In other words, now, there's a retaining wall between the properties, you know what I mean? And that is the only way to stop the water from flowing. In other words, they keep all the water that's on their lot now, it doesn't get, go anywhere else. You know what I mean?
Yeah, you did that when I, when I owned ten eighty-two and the ten eighty-four was being built and they were going up a foot and not with, I didn't request it, but there is a retaining wall and I believe it was your encouragement to do that.
Yeah, we, we basically say, you know, like, you can't like, you can't prove that you're gonna keep that stormwater on your property, you're gonna have to put in a retaining. So, I don't know if there's something to fix up there, but it is a, it is hard for us to make people do that. The challenge, but the challenge that we probably lose.
Cause there are also, I mean, talking about stormwater, there are a lot of homes that have gutters that don't actually go underground still?
They were, they were-
Grandfathered in, right?
They're all non-performing, so if they add any additional, uh, impervious, then they have to have a stormwater system for that. But anything that's non-performing, you just can't add to a non-performing. You can't make somebody go back and fix it non-performing.
Yeah.
Can't make somebody put a gutter in the stormwater, you know, all the way around the house.
But new construction still requires a French drainage system.
Does it include all the roofline, has to have all gutters, all that?
Every bit of the impervious area on your property has to retain that stormwater all the way.
So, like, if you like-
Doesn't matter if it's ten percent, up to forty percent. Now, you can't have it over forty percent.
Yeah.
Right.
But you don't have to put gutters in there.
We got a wonderful face through stormwater, so pro, uh, program. I mean, there, it's just not happening without approval. That's one of the things that we, you know, clearly, we're doing everything we can not to add to the problem cause I'm, I feel like if one drop on that house ends up in the street, I'll get bitten or poached. We're pretty strict with that, always have consequences on it.
There is a prohibition to adding, or is there? Adding soil to the, uh, properties being developed?
Now, you can, there, we can't find, if it's on this side of the, of the town's front door, if it's on this side of the town's front door, uh, there used to be, somebody used to say that you couldn't bring in soil or stuff like that, it didn't, didn't match what was there, kinda thing. But the truth is, is that in, during the exception where your lot is lower, then that's also part of the problem. We have to allow them.
Oh, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
First, you can't, you can't deny them the property because of your stormwater, cause that's taking the problem. So, you gotta be able to be, second, you can't, you can't have a foundation, you can't have a foundation where the water doesn't drain away from it. So, you, you-
Yeah.
By denying them the ability to fill, then you're basically losing all kind of tax value out of them and you're basically gonna have to use the problem.
Yeah, but, but shouldn't the stormwater plan include any additional dirt that's being added to it?
It does. Cause they have to get, a stormwater engineer. Anytime you put fill on a piece of property, you gotta have a stormwater engineer that tells- tells us not only how you put it on there, you know what I mean? And not only does it have the right qualities, but also that there's no stormwater leaving that problem.
Right. Because I've noticed, just about every new construction now, the first thing you see is additional topsoil or additional soil being put on it before the pilings are put on. So the stormwater plan has to consider what they add to it?
They, and see, we check that. See, they, they have to, when they fill out their, their application, they have to tell us they're bringing fill, have to tell us how much fill they're bringing, they have to give us a stormwater plan to go with it, and the stormwater plan has all the elevations before and now, what they're gonna do. We look at that, determine if it meets the ordinance requirements, and then we approve. When they give us, when, when, when they get through doing that and they give us, if it don't match, it can create all kind of problems, and one of them is, is they're not gonna get approved for the fixing. A lot of times we catch it, when do we catch it? We catch it in all rush because we require them to give us a elevation certificate, and they have to give us all the grades. So we know if they violated their zoning ordinance or fill permit and all of that before they get too far along to fix it.
And y'all would know if the elevation certificate is current to what they added to the property.
That's what I just said, you, you gotta give us, you have, you have to give us the current and then what you intended to do, and then you have, when you give it on the site, you have to give us what you done.
So given that, did, is there something in ordinances that need to be corrected to allow those properties that are, where the adjacent properties are higher elevation than that?
Well, it, it's there, it's an exception, but the exception...
But you gotta bring that to the, to the...
No, it's an exception, doesn't require...
Oh, okay.
It allows the staff to do it, but, but what I'm saying is, the exception should not be an exception. It should be lower lot ordinance. It should be an exception, because when you have an exception, that makes us have to determine what the exceptions are, and then I gotta answer to somebody, I didn't let them do something, because I, I had one decision there. We try to be consistent, but anybody that's ever been in construction knows, you've built the same house three times, three identical lots, you're gonna have three different sets of problems. So...
Well, Tim, is, is that something then?
We could do that.
You would, would you like to drag, would that be something we should look at and recommend to the board?
I think what you need to do is, you've heard what I think the problems are, I think you should let us, we, it'll probably take us a while, but let us bring you something back.
Okay.
Uh, show me what the problems are, how the problems are, and then maybe some recommendations and then I'll sort it all. Um, because I think this one's gonna be a little bit more harder than text amendments than some of the ones that we would take on ourselves. Because it's gonna be touchy, because the number of them that were not allowed to do it, because we determined that the exception didn't apply, the ones that were allowed to do it, and that, that's what I'm saying, you put staff in awful hard position and say, the exception, if this is what it's allowed. And where, you got an ordinance, you can't be more than a foot above the road, but you don't have ordinance that deals with everybody more than a foot above the road. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That means we gotta figure it out. So, it was nice when they're all flat.
So Jenny, you have everything as far as what we discussed?
I'll, I'll get it. I got, I got most of the points.
So you don't have any questions then, right?
No, I'm good.
Any other comments? A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All right. Do we begin next one?
All right. Thank y'all.